Okay, just a couple of brief housekeeping rules for you. We do, we, you can hear us in the lobby. So if you want to have any conversations, we really encourage you to go to the lobby and have those because we do record these live. A lot of people listen sometimes depending on what we're talking about. And so in order for people to be able to hear who are listening online or want to watch it later, we would, we invite your conversations to be in the lobby. And if you are still having them, we will probably excuse you and I don't want to embarrass anybody, okay? All right, so, thank you. Okay, so, welcome to our city council meeting. Thanks for being here. It's exciting to see everybody. The opening will be presented by Councilmember Blackham. He will then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And then we'll have, we'll have a presentation by Mrs. Shepherd's second grade class from Kaysville Elementary. So we're so excited for them to present in just a minute. Councilmember Blackham.
Just, I wanted to share just a couple of thoughts. You know, we, we go through our everyday lives and we seem to do things daily on a daily basis and they seem to be more redundant to us. And, you know, I heard a saying the other day that said, "Sometimes it's better to climb a mountain a hundred times than it is to climb a hundred mountains once." And I think you have to think about that and put that in your life and say, "Yeah, things may be redundant, but because of that, I'm probably where I'm at today." And then, we, as a council, it's always been our thoughts that we want to involve the community in pretty much everything that we do. And another one of the thoughts that I have is if you're, if you want your community to buy in, you need to allow them to weigh in. And I think that's what we try to do as a council for Kaysville City. I'd like to give a short prayer and then after that we'll stand up and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Father in Heaven, we're indeed grateful to be here. We are so blessed to live in a community such as Kaysville. Please bless our city employees that they will be able to carry out their task and their duties each and every day to make the lives of people in Kaysville better. Please help that all of us tonight will travel home peacefully and safely and that we can have a very meaningful civil meeting. And we ask for these blessings and we do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. If you'll all rise and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mrs. Shepherd.
We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, to ordain and establish this constitution for the United States of America.
You're making us tear up up here, especially since we just had an election. Fantastic job. Thank you for presenting that and thank you for being here. That's what it's about, right? Our youth, the future leaders of, of our world. And so, thank you for being here.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before we go any further on the agenda, I would like to make a motion that we move work item B, the Code Blue Shelter, to the presentation awards and make it item C.
Thank you. Okay, great. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Blackham. Let me make that change. Okay, all right. Now, I'm so glad that we've got so many people here because that presentation was amazing. And we have another one to share. Employee of the Quarter is awarded to Cameron Cesna. And we'd invite Chief to come up and do that.
Mayor, council, city leaders, and residents, thank you for your time this evening. Cameron's done a lot of great things for us. It really has. He's done a lot of great things for the city, hence the City Employee of the Quarter Award. One of the things, we started up a heavy rescue program by his guidance. And it's not that easy. They, they have to present it to me, sell it to me, what the need is. So you have to jump through quite a few hoops and, and he's accomplished that. Soon as he came to us, he's came to us about four or five years ago, part-time. We hired on him full-time. And he really just hit the ground running. Promoted to engineer recently and has done a great job for this city, let alone the fire department.
So thanks.
So, without that, I'd like to issue or give him this Employee of the Quarter certificate.
We've got a great team here in Kaysville. They work hard to keep us safe and keep the lights on and, and do a great job for our city. So, thank you.
And probably more importantly, you want this check, so.
Okay, we now have a presentation and I'm glad everyone's here for this because when Absolutely, thank you. I asked Jerry Goodspeed to be our unsung hero last year, he said, "Okay, I'll only do it if you talk about USU Botanical Gardens and give me an opportunity." Cameron, thank you so much. So Jerry, we brought the press and everything. Thanks for all that you do. We sure do appreciate you. So hopefully, everybody will know and have an opportunity to learn all about the great
Absolutely. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. You guys want to come up for a picture? things that happen at the Botanical Center.
Yeah.
So come on down. Yeah, let's go do it.
Well, I'm glad there's a lot of people here, too. I did bring my two-hour PowerPoint presentation, I promise. Can we get that started?
Yeah.
So I just have a couple of things real quick. Give these to one of you to give the, there you go. As you know, with the indoor arena that we have, we're doing some special things. And I wanted you to be aware of two things. One is, the Monday before Thanksgiving, we partnered with King Garf Corporation and we're going to have a special Veterans Evening where we'll be handing out 300 meals for our veterans and for those who have families who are deployed. And we'll be introducing them to our new equine therapy program. I think I talked to you at one time that the indoor arena, one of the big pushes I wanted was our therapy programs to succeed. And so we have somebody hired now, she's working. We have too many horses. King Garf is also buying another horse for us to run the program for, for veterans. And so on the 25th is kind of our pit kickoff for the equine programs, the therapy programs, so that we can start working with traumatic, or people that have gone through traumatic experiences. And there will soon be a trail around the Botanical Center there for horse riding. They do a lot of it inside the arena, but it's also, once they get to a point, then we can take them outside and ride them around the area as well. So, to me, this is really exciting because, and, and I'm a horticulturist, talking about horses. So, you know, you know how exciting that is. And then the second thing is that I just handed out, I just wanted to make everybody aware of our reindeer express days. And this is also to benefit our equine programs, therapy programs. And we have a vet who has reindeer. So we're going to bring reindeer. And the vet talks about reindeer and getting them ready for Santa Claus. So they're Santa Claus's reindeer we bring down. And the families can come in and we have camel, we have some other things as well. So they can come in and they can experience some of the animals of Christmas. Santa will be there. We'll have things for kids to do, some activities for them, and some food and hot chocolate and those types of things. But I wanted the mayor and council to be aware of what we're doing and where we're at with some of these things. This is going to be a really good event and it'll be a tradition that we'd like to establish in Kaysville from here on out. And we're working with Discover Davis to try to promote that and make it bigger. This year, we, we kind of have to limit the amount of people because of the fire code and we can only put so many people in our building at one time. And so tickets will go on sale. They went on sale today, but we're only limiting it to 2,000 people just because of the fire codes and things. In the future, it'll be a longer time. As you see on the flyer, it's just for four hours on Saturday and December, the 14th. Thank you. And so, kind of exciting for us. We haven't really promoted it. We put the tickets on sale this morning and we've already sold a couple hundred. So, so get your tickets early. So, any questions on what we're doing? I just want to try to, as I said, bring the council and the mayor a little bit more up to date and so that you're aware of what's happening at the Botanical Center. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Any questions? No. Jerry, thank you so much. Just for those who are watching and want to know, he was awarded the unsung hero because Jerry's worked at the Botanical Garden for University a long time. And he's being up here when I talk about that. But he, he's just, he is an unsung hero. He does such a great work there. And the Botanical Center is such a fascinating, wonderful place. It's free to the public. You can go there, you can get training on plants, different types of flowers and vegetables and trees that grow. And you can walk the site, it's open to the public, and it's an amazing place. And so.
You can ride horses?
And you can ride horses now as well. Thank you, Jerry. Thanks. Okay, we'll see if I can hook this up. All right, so, Councilmember Blackham decided, made a motion to move the Code Blue update to this point in the, in the, in the presentation. So, we're going to talk about it a little bit. First of all, I was going to provide you with the really long history of how we got to this point, but instead of doing that, I'm going to, let's see, where am I going to do here? What? We're going to do it right after. Yeah. Okay, so basically, the state last year, in 2023, passed a law that said that counties of the second class, like Davis County, would need to stand up some kind of a shelter facility. So when we first heard about this, the county said, "Okay, we, we have to create a task force. So we need some mayors to step up and volunteer to serve on the task force." So I, I volunteered and said, "Yes, I want to be part of the conversations." You know, when we talk about homelessness, it's a really sensitive subject. There are so many people that are in the, you know, we have extremes. There are people that don't want to do anything and feel like that's not the government's job. And then there are people who are very compassionate and want to open up, you know, every facility that we can to support people. So there's a wide variety of, of compassion and, and interest. And so, we said, "Yeah, we want to be part of the conversations." So me, seven other mayors in Davis County, and one of the county commissioners were part of this seven-member task force to create a winter plan response, a winter response for Davis County. So, we met with the county over the course of more than a year, year and a half, and we said, "Okay, you know, let's look at some sites, let's look at some data. We want to know how many people need shelter, what is the requirement with the law?" So as we've gone through the process, the law has been amended and there's different iterations of the law, and there's also different interpretations of the law. And so it's been a confusing, confusing process. In, in Kaysville, we've, we noticed really quickly that, so there were some sites identified early on by the county as potential Code Blue shelters. One of them was in Kaysville. And we said, "Oh, wait, okay." And, and not only Kaysville was saying that, other cities were also identified and they were saying, "Ooh, you know, we're not sure that this is a good idea." So, we were, as a council, we're having a discussion about this, thinking, "Okay, what are we going to do?" And Councilmember Blackham actually said, "Hey, my wife was watching this YouTube video and she saw some, some information out of, about a warming shelter bus. It's working in other countries, it's working in other cities, maybe it could work for us here in Davis County," as we try to wrap our head around, "How big is the need? What should we do?" Now, a warming bus is really sort of a temporary solution. So I'm going to show you a couple pictures so you know what we're talking about. Well, you know, I obviously don't know how to operate this, so. Here we go. Okay, so, my husband and I happen to be in Florida. They produce these, these warming buses, these dignity buses, in Florida, in Vero Beach. So Jason had, you know, we talked to the council, "Hey, council, is this something that Kaysville City is willing to spend some time looking into?" And we, as a council, said yes, because we wanted to accomplish a couple of things. First of all, the most important part of this law is that it's supposed to save lives when it's really cold. And we're all on board to save lives. I can't imagine anyone wanting someone to suffer and die. So if the purpose of the bill, if the bill is to save lives, the state said, "Okay, county, you have a 16-bed requirement." So, we said, "Jason, will you look into this warming bus idea?" And so he spent some time researching it. He found a company in Vero Beach, California, nonprofit, that takes large touring buses and retrofits them into, into these dignity buses. And, you guys, I'm not operating this real well, but basically, this is what it looks like. Oh, whoops, that's not very big. Okay, so in those buses, there are 20 lay-down flat beds. And, you know, you initially hear about a bus and you think, "What, people are just going to sit up all night on a school bus?" This is not what it is at all. It's these wonderful, this wonderful bus facility that has 20 beds, they're, they have little private compartments, people can plug in their phones, there's a toilet on the bus. Ideally, people would be on the bus to kind of make sure that people were being safe on the bus, but it's a place to sleep. And the law required a 16-bed place to sleep. And so we said, "Okay, this sounds like a good idea. This is a 20-person bus." And as we noticed in having these task force discussions, it was becoming hard and contentious. No city really is going to say, "Hey, bring a shelter to us," because we know all the problems that can come with a potential shelter. And so we said, "Instead of pitting cities against each other in Davis County, let's work together. Let's create a solution, think outside the box, and try to, try to provide a solution for this requirement, for this law, and keep people alive." So, we went out and we toured these buses. So my husband and I, we're in Florida, in Miami. I said, "Lee, we're going to Vero Beach." And he said, "What?" And I said, "Yeah, we're so close, we're four and a half hours away. Let's drive down to Vero Beach and let's just go meet with the mayor and the city and talk to this company that makes the bus." And so, you know, he's going, "Oh, my gosh, Jamie." So we rented a car, we drove to Vero Beach, we spent six hours with the mayor of Vero Beach, was a wonderful person, and, and this organization that, that builds these buses. And we learned about it because I thought, it's one thing to talk about a bus, it's another thing to put eyes on it. And if I'm going to ask the state and the county to invest money and try to get the other mayors, I want to see for myself, is this a good idea? So we went down there and we, we saw it, and I'm just going to show you a couple more pictures. This is how big the bus is inside. You know, it's a bus, so yes, there's not a lot of space. So, when we went back to the other mayors and the commission, we said, "Hey, here's a plan. This would work. The bus is $150,000, custom wrapped, you can have it wrapped to say whatever you want. It comes with bedding and sheets, and a full program in terms of how to manage a bus program." They've already thought it out. They've also taken, taken these touring buses and they've reclassified them as RVs, which minimizes and reduces the amount of insurance. So we did a little more research. We said, "Well, how could the county pay for this?" And they said, "Well, ARPA funds can be used. That's federal rescue money. Can be used, it's been used in other cities across, you know, different states, and it could, you can use ARPA money to buy the bus." So we went back to the task force and said, "Hey, mayors, what do you think? This allows us all to be part of the solution. It's not putting it in your city or in your city. It's a bus that's going to be located in different locations. People can either, the bus could pick them up and give them a safe place to sleep, or people could, you know, we could shuttle people to a bus, which is kind of dumb. So the bus could just ideally drive around the county, pick people up, and then park somewhere and keep them warm at night. Sounds like a good idea. $150,000 out the door," my husband likes to say when he talks about cars. "That's the out-the-door price." And then it's about $30,000 to $50,000, depending on how often you use the bus to operate it. So the bus could be plugged in at night and you could even put it, you know, hook it up to a pump station. And, and that's where it is. And so it would take care of people. So we went back to the task force and said, "Hey, task force, what do you think?" And the mayors all said, "Yeah, this is a great idea. Let's do it. Let's do the bus." It's something that hasn't been thought of in the Western United States. It's in Rhode Island, in Massachusetts, and in Florida, and there are other states that are looking at it as, as an option for, for helping people in need. And so, the, the task force said, "Yeah, let's do it." And then we went to the county and said, "Okay, county, we're on board." And the county said, "Ooh, wait a second, who's going to manage it? And we don't want to manage it." That's what the county commission said. "We don't want to manage this bus program." And, you know, like any program, any facility, it has its disadvantages, right? There's closed space, the, the law enforcement was kind of concerned, "What if someone acted out on the bus? How would we, you know, secure the facility, et cetera?" So there's always, there's always concerns and questions. So they said, "We don't want to manage the program." And they said, "Hey, hey, cities, why don't you manage the program?" And we said, "Well, as cities, we don't have the ability, for one, we're not going to get the funds, we don't have access to the funds. Are you going to write a check to Kaysville City? Well, no, the funds have to trickle a certain way." "Okay, well, then how are we, as a city, going to manage this program?" And so we went to, so we were able to get an agreement. So the task force member said, "Let's submit this plan to the state and see if the state will pay for it. And Davis County doesn't want to manage it, let's ask the state to manage it." So we submit this plan and we, I personally had conversations with the State Homeless Services Department. It's probably not the actual correct name, but State, State Homeless Services Department. And I said, "Okay, tell me now, before I put a lot of effort," this was before we went to Vero Beach and looked at it, "I said, "Before we put a lot of effort into this, tell me if this is a viable idea. Because I don't want to waste my time, my city's time, anyone's time on this, or yours, if it's stupid. You just tell me it's stupid." And I was told, "No, this is a viable option. It's never been done here, it doesn't mean we couldn't pilot a program." Okay? That's what I was told. So I said, "Okay, city, let's do it." And so Lee and I, my husband, are in Vero, you know, Miami, we drive to Vero Beach, we put a lot of time and effort into it with the support of our city council and the other mayors on the task force. And we brought back a lot of information. We've got the whole brochure and I will put that up in just a minute. And so the county commission said, "Okay, fine, we'll sign off on this plan only because everybody agrees to it." Now that's, there's a couple of key things there. Everyone agreed to it, okay? It was something that would, would potentially work. I also talked to the other mayors in Davis County, there are 15 cities. "How do you each feel about this? Yeah, this is great, this is great. We're not fighting against each other as cities, our communities won't be fighting. This is a great solution." As we look for a long-term plan, this is temporary. We knew that going in. So we, we submit it to the state task force. And the state said, "Okay, we have a couple of questions. Number one, who's going to manage the program? Who's going to, who's going to operate it? Who's going to drive it? Where is it going to be?" One of the cities said, "Hey, we have an industrial area, it could be parked there. Okay, check that box." The county said, "No, not us, we're not doing it. We don't want to do that, this is not good, we're not doing that." And they were getting some advice from their legal team, so I'm not trying to throw anyone under this bus. It's just that they were receiving some information saying, "Yeah, it's not a good idea," for all these reasons, but I don't feel like it was fully vetted. I, honestly, I don't think they disliked the idea. So we went to, so the state task force came back with these questions that were unanswered. So then I went back to the mayors and said, "Okay, could all the cities, 15 cities in Davis County agree and sign a letter saying, 'State, we really like this idea, will you push it forward?'" There were some cities who, who thought other ideas would be better, maybe rotating some tents or even using facilities. Now, some of these cities weren't at risk to have, I shouldn't say at risk, weren't, weren't on the, weren't options to have a facility. So it's kind of easy, if you're not a city that will host a facility, to say, you know, "Let's think of something else." So we didn't have 100% consensus on that, and so we didn't send a letter to the state that said, "Every city in Davis County agrees, this is a great idea." So the state task force came back and said, "Well, no, we, your, your plan checks all the boxes, but you don't have any funding." So the state has $101,000 that's already been allocated to them to fund something in Davis County. This is $150,000 plus operational costs of $30,000 to $50,000 per year. So there was a funding gap. So we said, "Okay, county, there's a funding gap." And the county said, "No, we're not doing the bus. Drop the bus. This is a bad idea, we're not doing the bus." And so the state had no choice, really, other than to deny the plan because there was a funding gap. So, there's a couple of problems with this. First of all, the state, you know, they make a law and then it's really hard because it has no funding. They say, "Counties, go do this, but, but by the way, we don't have a lot of money to put towards it, but you have to do it anyway." And then that requirement comes back and falls back on counties and cities to fund that gap. And that's, that's not a good idea. That's not good. So, that's kind of what's led us to where we are now. So as, so basically, the state said, "Okay, your plan failed because you don't have funding. So now what we're going to ask you, Davis County, is to come up with, with some locations that could be used for Code Blue shelters." Now, I'm not part of those conversations at this point because the task force had done its job. We submitted a plan and after that, the task force is basically kind of dissolved and now it's between the county and the state to figure out what to do next. They didn't like our plan. I don't have a lot of real information in real time. All we've been told is that we know that we were on a list of potential shelters. So the, the church in Fruit Heights that we heard about yesterday, last night actually, initially said, "Hey, we'll, we'll, we'll provide a facility. We will let people come here." And, and that was the main facility, and then there were some backup locations. Kaysville Emission Center was noted as one of the potential backup locations. Last night in the meeting, the church said, "Hey, we're getting too much negative feedback. We are a church, we do good things, we bring communities together, there's a lot of strife, we're not going to offer our facility anymore." That's their right, that's their choice. And so now it's back on the table. And in the, in the meeting, Commissioner Kamalu Lareen mentioned that the Emission Center would be a primary location. We haven't heard that from the county. So I reached out to the county today and said, "Hey, we heard this." And the county said, "Okay, there'll be three locations and we'll rotate through them." So that's the latest information that I've heard. Kaysville Emission Center, location being one of those three locations. I said, "We would like to see your Code Blue plan." And I was told, "Look, we actually don't have any obligation to notify the city at this point, it's between us and the state. I'm sure maybe at some point they'll provide the updated Code Blue plan for us, but, you know, everything is happening so quickly and this is in real time. And last night is when the official notification was given that Fruit Heights was off the table of that location. And so now the state's trying, or the county's trying to figure out a solution." So, so that's where we are, that's where we're at right now. Code Blue was already an item on our agenda to, to have a discussion about. We are just having a bigger discussion now because we have, like Councilmember Blackham said, we've wanted through this process to be very transparent. At the end of the day, I know I made a promise, it's not going to come here, I'll do everything in my power to prevent that because we don't feel like Kaysville's the right location to host a facility like this. I still believe that, I still believe that that's true. Our council agrees, our city agrees with that. However, we want to be part of a solution. At the end of the day, these are people and these are lives, and that's why we submitted the bus plan. So, that's where we're at right now. The county has the ability to say, "We own this facility in your city, we are putting it here. As a city, we can't change our zoning laws, it won't affect this. We can't, we can protest for sure, but there's nothing that we can do as a city to, to say no. What we can do as a city is this, and this is what we will do. We will make sure that we've increased patrols, we're going to make sure that our, that our area, that there's safety. We want to be part of a, a solution in terms of making sure that our own residents are safe and protected, as well as people that are coming into our city. So we can do that. We can also have ongoing communications with the county to make sure that we're trying to communicate with them as much as possible so we know what's going on." What I'm doing personally, and what I encourage you to do, is this. Let's see, where's the QR code? I don't know where it is. Is, okay, so, there's a QR code picture in the hallway. What that will link you to, if you take a picture of the, and I really want to be, there Code Blue was already an item on our agenda to, to have a discussion about. We are just having a bigger discussion now because we have, like Councilmember Blackham said, we've wanted through this process to be very transparent. At the end of the day, I know I made a promise, it's not going to come here, I'll do everything in my power to prevent that because we don't feel like Kaysville's the right location to host a facility like this. I still believe that, I still believe that that's true. Our council agrees, our city agrees with that. However, we want to be part of a solution. At the end of the day, these are people and these are lives, and that's why we submitted the bus plan. So that's where we're at right now. The county has the ability to say, we own this facility in your city, we are putting it here. As a city, we can't change our zoning laws, it won't affect this. We can't, we can protest for sure, but there's nothing that we can do as a city to, to say no. What we can do as a city is this, and this is what we will do. We will make sure that we've increased patrols. We're going to make sure that our, that our area, that there's safety. We want to be part of a, a solution in terms of making sure that our own residents are safe and protected, as well as people that are coming into our city. So we can do that. We can also have ongoing communications with the county to make sure that we're trying to communicate with them as much as possible so we know what's going on. What I'm doing personally, and what I encourage you to do, is this. Um, let's see, where's the QR code? Uh, I don't know where it is. Is, okay, so there's a QR code picture in the hallway. What that will link you to, if you take a picture of the, and I really want to be, there it is. Okay. Oh, wait, do I need, okay, there it is. All right. Thank you. So Anne Marie and Mindy created this for us today, so please take a picture of this QR code. What it will direct you to are a couple of things. Number one, Davis County has a point in time count. Every county across the nation does a point in time count. Last year I had the opportunity to participate in it. What it, what it does is we go out in the middle of the night and we try to find people within our communities who are living in their cars or, or living outside. And we, we count them. How many people in, within our community are in this situation? I participated in that, there's an opportunity to participate in January, I encourage you to do that. The other way you can get involved is you can sign up to be a Code Blue volunteer. I've done that. Um, for the Code Blue facilities, you have to sign up as a volunteer and go through the training, that's all I know so far. And I wanted to do it because I wanted to make sure that I know what's going on in our community, and I can put eyes on it. I'm a visual person, you can tell. So I encourage you to do that. The other thing that you can do is you can reach out to your legislators. This law needs to be tweaked. There, there's some, there's some big problems with it, including the makeup and the organization of the whole policy program. I think it's really frustrating when we have a law that's passed and then we have legislators show up at specific meetings saying, not here. Well, you just passed the law. So if we're going to take that position of not here for our own districts, we need to take that on a broader scale and say, this is a bad law, we need to fix it. I think that what makes more sense is to have a, a solution that is outside of city limits. You know, it's really a tough ask to say, okay, everyone, we all have compassion, we all want to keep people alive, so now we're going to bring people into an established community, when a lot of people have chosen to live outside established norms. Not everybody, but a lot of people have. And if they're making that choice, then I think that a, a proper response is to be able to provide them the support that they need, but not to infringe upon an existing community to do that. So that is, that's my position, and I will now turn the time over to council, and then we'll turn the time over to you. I know you're all here to speak about this. Um, I will tell you, before I turn the time over to council and then to you, usually we have a six-person limit to speak. Tonight, we're going to let you speak, however, we do have other agenda items, and we want to shorten your comments so that people will have the opportunity to be heard. I will set it up this way, saying that we don't have any county commissions, commissioners here that I know of, we don't have any state legislators. Kaysville City has done everything possible. I promise you, we have talked to everybody, we have talked to ourselves until we are almost out of the ability to speak about this, trying to come up with solutions. So we don't have the ability to make any decisions about this in this location. Commissioners do, state legislatures sure does, and so I just want to make sure that that's clear. Counsel.
Yeah, um, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, the one thing, at the very beginning of this process, when they were talking about county buildings, uh, the senior center, which is just east of this building, was one of the options. And, um, if you'll notice now, it's not. And that's, I believe, is really because of the efforts of the, the residents of Kaysville for standing up and reaching out to legislatures, county commissioners, and our mayor. And the efforts that were done to say, that's a really stupid idea. And, uh, and we, we totally agreed, and so, and I just want to, um, first off, and I imagine the other council members do the same, is, uh, thanks to Mayor Tran. I think we are probably the most transparent city in all the, in all of Davis County for having brought this up with the residents as soon as it started. To give people a heads up that say, hey, this was the law that was passed in the legislature, and here's what we know about it and we'll keep you informed. We've been against it, we, none of us think that Kaysville is the proper place with the facilities that are here. We all believe that once a Code Blue shelter comes into an area, problems will occur. We, I mean, I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll bet on that one, and I don't bet. But, uh, and that's unfortunate, but we have compassion, we want to be part of the solution, we thought we had a viable option that was turned down. And, uh, for reasons that I think we just don't fully know, other than some people didn't like the idea. And, uh, but I just, again, thanks, Mayor, for your efforts.
Thanks.
I guess, uh, all I really want to say is, you know, I think this council worked really hard and we came up with a viable option. We came up with an option that put all fifteen cities in the county in it all at the very same level. And getting everybody to buy into that and, and see that there, yeah, there is compassion for that. We don't, nobody wants somebody to lay out there at night and freeze and die. That's not what we want. We want to, we have compassion for that. But we came up with a solution. That's one of the things that's frustrating to me is, a lot of times you get these things put on you, but nobody has a solution. We actually came up with a solution that was equal to each and every city in the county, and they turned it down because of a, a little bit of funding, they said. But we've all sat back and watched funding up there. There, there's always money when something works. And I, and I feel like this was a viable answer. I know there are people who would be volunteered to drive the bus, I don't think it would be a big deal. And it is when the temperatures are eighteen and below, uh, at night. It's just frustrating to me that the committee was given this task to come up with a viable answer. They did, they presented it. It was a little more money than what was initially, but how did they come up with that figure in the first place? Who knew what it was going to cost? Well, they came up with something that was very reasonable, especially something that involved all fifteen cities in the county. And the fact, and that's why I've taken a hard line, that is the answer. There is no other answer. That's the answer. And that's kind of where I've been from the beginning.
Yeah, appreciate the mayor and this council and our city manager, Jason. We have put forth such a great effort. I would, I would say that our city has probably put forth more, uh, work on this after hours than probably any other city in Davis County. And we were the first ones to talk about this because we wanted to get ahead of it, we wanted to be transparent. And from the very get-go, this entire council, we have, we have been solution-oriented. We want to be a part of the solution to help the most disadvantaged, um, group of our society, the homeless people and folks that don't have homes, especially on cold nights. And, uh, what originally encouraged us to think outside of the box and to talk about this warming bus was, you know, we first caught wind that the county was going to select the senior center here. And our first thought was, what is that going to do to our senior citizens? And also to cross the street from an elementary school. And that was very concerning to us as a council, and that's the very reason why we brought it up when we did. And the other solution, we were told over and over, we will not, uh, select the emission center on the west side of town, when in reality, that is on the list, and that's been given to the state homeless task force. Now, that facility, the reason why we have issue with that, there's no services nearby. And if, uh, if I'm correct on this, when we did the point in time count, I believe there was a backpack that was counted in Kaysville, and that was counted as a homeless individual. The majority of the homeless folks, uh, in the county are not in Kaysville. Now, despite that, we want to be a part of the solution. The mayor and some of us on council and city manager, we went up to Logan and we looked at the warming center in Logan. It's in a church, it's a beautiful thing, it works. I think it could be a model for the entire state. We met with the executive director up there, learned everything, uh, we needed to know, the ins and outs of, of what to do, what not to do when dealing with a Code Blue center, a warming center. And so I know that we've talked to churches in our own community, we've talked to nonprofits, we've, we've talked to the public, we've asked for public help, if you have any ideas. And so we want to be a part of the solution, and I feel like this, this bus idea, it was so creative and ingenious, and it actually works. And I would vote right now for our city to put ten thousand dollars a year, and if every city in the county matched that, every year, to fund this. We were not really given the opportunity to, to come to that agreement with the task force, because, um, by the time we submitted our plan, it was denied. And if, if I understand correctly, I believe the state homeless, uh, council or task force is going to make a decision next week. And Kaysville is on, is part of the decision. And, uh, I just want to applaud the, our residents here for being very vocal and sharing your concern. We've had residents speak on both sides, we have a lot of residents that want to be a part of the solution, and we also have residents that have expressed concern, and it's a very valid concern. And I want to thank our council, our mayor, our mayor has done so much work, and let me tell you, our mayor has taken so many arrows through this issue from the very beginning. And it has been very hard for us on council to see that, but we, we completely support her, we support each other, and we stand by our decision as a city that this is not the best solution. However, we would like some of these creative solutions like the, the warming bus to be taken more seriously, so.
She used to be five eight.
Good.
Okay, so, um, just to our residents here tonight, uh, it's already been said a lot, so I'll just reiterate, uh, what the mayor and the, and the council said, that we feel like we've done pretty much everything we could have done, um, in helping facilitate, uh, or help ensure, to try to help ensure an eventual outcome, um, that was one that would be suitable for individuals experiencing homelessness, as well as our community. As a city, we'll continue, oh, wait, hold on, that's for the end. All right, um, and I also just want to, you know, you never want to get up and say, oh, someone's done a bad job. I'll just say that this process has gone on for over a year, and has been needlessly frustrating for our residents, for us, and I'm sure the county and the state are frustrated too. I don't think anyone is particularly happy about how this has gone down. It's been confusing, there've been miscommunications, and, um, uh, let's see. And I still think we don't really have a clear reason as to why this is being considered as one of the best sites, um, other than what I could come up with on my own, which is that the county just happens to own it. And if that's the only reason, then this is like a meh plan at best. It, um, will keep people from freezing to death, which is, of course, a plus. But as a resident and as a constituent, I would have expected better from my representation. So again, I, I support the bus idea, and I'll just say, we'll continue to represent our residents in the best way we can and work to mitigate any issues that this will cause, uh, you know, understanding that we are not the main decision-makers on this. And continue, as we have, to try to make this as transparent as possible, um, because as we've seen earlier in this meeting through comments made by Mayor Tran, and, uh, that, transparency doesn't seem to have a great sense of urgency when it comes to this topic, but for me, it's very important. And, um, and one of my favorite quotes is by, uh, Supreme Court Justice Louis Brandeis, you've probably heard it, it says, sunlight is said to be the best of disinfectants. And I feel like this is one of the situations where that is very, very aptly stated. Um, but, and also thanks to our residents, thanks to our mayor, thanks to our, our city manager and everyone who's been involved in this, it's been a real team thing, and I just appreciate all the involvement and, and hope you'll continue to be involved in this and in other issues in the future.
Wow, thank you so much, everybody.
I, I'll probably use bolder words than Councilwoman Hunt. I'll say, I, I am extremely disappointed with the county. I am extremely disappointed with the state. Um, you know, when people complain about things and they don't provide a solution, yeah, you can say, oh, they're just the not in my backyard people. We weren't those people. We gave them a solution. And it's an awesome solution. You know, I toured, uh, I don't know if any of you have had the chance to do, uh, any research into the Other Side Village that they're, uh, proposing in Salt Lake and that they're building. But it, it has to do with thinking outside of the box to solve the homelessness problem. And it's centered around the fact that people that are perpetually homeless have, have stronger issues than, than we know, and they need help, but they also need a community. And the Other Side Village is actually going to provide that for them. And they're thinking outside of the box. Shelters don't work. They just don't work. It's been proven that they don't work. And so people that are talking about doing warming buses and villages, these other plans, let's try them, let's pilot them. My challenge to you, invitation to all of you tonight, is to get in front of the county and tell them, why aren't you doing the warming bus? Why aren't you asking the cities to come up with the extra forty grand that's needed? You know, they were willing to pay this church somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars to be, to be a location. We need a hundred and fifty for the bus. We'll come up with the money, like Councilmember Jackson, I'll second him, we'll come up with the money. Just give us the opportunity. Um, you know, that's all I really have to say, except for, you know, I'm sorry that you all are having to be here on a Thursday night, you can't just be hanging out watching Thursday night football, but I'm so glad that you are here, and I hope that you'll share this message with the people who are actually making the decisions, because unfortunately, it's not going to be us. And let me be really clear, like, we're getting a lot of flack that we aren't Christlike, or that we don't care. We do care. We want people to be warm. When I walk out and take my garbage out and it's freezing cold, my first thought is, my gosh, I feel so bad for people that aren't inside a warm location. The county's plan right now is to drive around and pick people up in a bus to bring them to a location. They're using a bus. Let's take out the middle man and just keep them in the bus, keep them warm. I look at those cozy beds and I think, I'd like to spend a night there, that looks kind of nice. Take, take a relaxing location. Anyway, that's all I'll say, but I appreciate everybody also being here.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, we will turn over the mic to you. So during public comment, you'll have up to two minutes. We hope that you can be succinct and try not to repeat each other. I mean, we'd like everyone to have an opportunity, but we also have other agenda items that we need to complete tonight. So, um, come up one at a time, you don't have to have signed up. I, I do have a list, I'll go from the list first, and then if there are other people that want to say something, you can. So just a second, let me find the list. Uh, where is it? It's somewhere. Okay, here we go. Joel Harris, Jennifer, uh, Soraya, Megan, Jason, Mark, and Zane.
City Council, Mayor Tran, thank you for having this meeting tonight. I know it's not the, the most exciting thing that we all want to do after a long day of work, um, but the city means a lot to me. And I, first of all, want to give you my, uh, thanks for, I've attended all the meetings that we, the city has had on this topic. I remember the meeting we had when, when, uh, Councilman, uh, Blackham brought, brought up the bus, and I thought that was the coolest thing. I was raising my hand, said, I, I'll be one of the drivers if you need a driver on, on those nights. So I really appreciate the fact that you guys, after being pressured by the state, being pressured by the county, again, picked the topic. This is, this is basically a government overreach problem. This is the state dictating to a smaller municipal government of what to do, and if we don't do it, they're going to push it on, down our throats anyway. So I appreciate the fact that, Tammy, that you got in front of this right in the beginning, that you, I thought that was brilliant idea so that you knew the, the conversation. You knew what was coming, you kept the city and the, and the citizens like myself aware of what was happening and what was being basically ram-rodded down our throats by the state. And I just think, we, we just had a federal mandate, uh, that happened Tuesday, uh, to, to get rid of stupid laws and government overreach, and that's exactly what this is. This is government, big brother, telling little brother what to do, whether we want it or not, and so thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'll be really fast. So the history of homelessness started to grow because Utah decided to do housing first. This was a failed plan from the beginning. Paying for someone's housing when they were not committed to working was a failed plan from the beginning. And then it was announced nationwide that Utah was paying for housing, and we had low unemployment. I worked there, I was, I helped people with disabilities find jobs. And the majority, a lot of people in those shelters have disabilities. And so those were my clients. People were coming from all across the nation because of that. So yes, we are compassionate. Are we responsible for the people in Detroit? Those were the people that were coming, people from Detroit. And we, it was cutting out, you go to the shelter for 30 days and you get paid housing. You get on the Section 8 housing list. And that circumvented the services that were meant for people in our own communities that were aging and needing the Section 8 housing. And so their waiting list grew to 10 years while we were housing people coming from other states. The homeless service providers who really care work on eliminating homelessness. Point me one homeless service provider that isn't growing. They're not, they're growing because of the money. They're not truly helping people get out of homelessness. And I know this because I worked with the Road Home. I took names of six men that I had put on a bus to go work for the day and I said, these guys need to check in at 10:30 today to get a bed. Can I check in for them? And check in for them every day? Give you names of the people that are on that bus that are going to work? And they said no. They said no because, so they, these men were sleeping on a yoga mat on the kitchen floor in overflow because they would not quit their jobs to be in line at 10:30. So we have set, the state has set up policies that has created a failure. The, there's some other things that are concerning to me. The county has received a settlement from the opioid lawsuit. Where has that money gone? Because this is the people that it's meant for. The, also, sorry, in the, so a year and a half ago, I was asked to be part of the task force because I knew this population and I was ignored. The shelter downtown was housing 700 and it could not handle that anymore. And that's why they opened up into other facilities. Putting 20 men or women on a bus, I'll tell you what's going to happen. They're going to get on each other's nerves and they don't care about stabbing each other because they are, they are not in the shelters because they have been trespassed for their behaviors. This isn't, this isn't the nice ones. This isn't the ones that are just down on their luck. 30% of the people in our homeless, in our homeless services cycle stay for three weeks. They get back on their feet and they're never back again. And the rest of them are chronically homeless. They get housing, they do something to get kicked out of that housing. They go back to the homeless shelter and then they take, again and again and again, from the people who truly need it. There's a limited amount of peanut butter and we're spreading it thin and it's not helping anybody. The, one of the, um, sorry, I hope you're okay if I go over. One of the guys that was, I helped find a job. He was working 12-hour shifts at a nursery. He would come home and they put him on a yoga mat in the kitchen, or to the Road Home. They put him on the floor in the kitchen and there were some men fighting. It was the men's side of the shelter. There were other people fighting and he said, please, 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 I have to get up at 6 o'clock. Can you guys just fight tomorrow? One of them went to the microwave, nuked a bowl of water and threw it on his face at 3 AM and he was hospitalized. These are not the friendlies. These are ones that they take and take and take as long as we give and give and give. And do we care about them? Absolutely, yes, we do. And you want, you want solutions? I don't think it's going to be the bus. Who's going to pay for the third-degree burns on that one? Who's going to pay for the rape when the owners of that bus get sued? That's why they didn't, they didn't like the idea. They didn't take the time to tell you that. I think it's a fabulous idea that we, that you're trying to come to solutions. And Fruit Heights has the meeting last night. People were like, how do we help? You help the ones that are in the shelter get out of the shelter. We don't have to wait for it to get cold. We can help the ones, if there's a job, there's a lot of employers here. If you have a job that someone can do, maybe not on an everyday basis, but hey, my illness is good today and so I can go and work today. If there's a job that you can provide someone, then reach out to the shelter and give somebody a chance. Someone that is obeying the rules of that shelter and get them out so that there's room for the ones that are on the streets to go back in there. I think that, that Governor Cox himself has said that the services that the state is providing isn't working. It's not working. It's not solving the solutions at all. And so we've got to get to the root of the problem. This admin, said outgoing administration. Biden created a CPB one app where people could apply for refugee status outside of the country and get flown in. And they, whether or not they applied, they qualified for refugee status. They were given, the government considered them to be legal citizens. And so they were, they are the ones that are in our shelters. We need to contact our legislators and say, if they're applying for refugee status and they have a criminal history, then they need to be deported immediately. Not wait until, wait for the six months while they're on Section 8 housing and food stamps and Medicaid to find out that they don't qualify. Those are things our legislators can do now until someone that's going to take care of some things gets into position. You have amazing people in Kaysville. We have amazing people in Davis County that want to help the actual issue. But until you get down to the root of the problem and you're not waiting at the bottom of the cliff for people who have already fallen off, then we're not going to, we're not going to solve the issue. We're just going to keep making money off of the solution and it's not going to solve the problem. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Sarah Walker. I, homelessness is a really tough issue. I don't think it can actually be solved, but I think it can be managed. And as a resident of Kaysville, I'm actually in favor of the code blue housing. I think that it's a way that our community can contribute. I think last year, there were maybe 23 days, you guys might be able to tell me, that were actually considered code blue. And I feel like Kaysville can do 23 days. I lived in Salt Lake most of my adult life and they are drowning with the homelessness problem. And if our county can do a little bit, I think 23 days is doable. And I would be happy and proud to be a code blue city, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service and for your help in understanding, taking care of our community and helping us understand the topic and the issue. I would like to argue that Kaysville is the perfect location for a code blue facility. As my husband and I have about 10 years now in, working in the criminal justice system. And I am, of course, not an expert by any means. I do have somewhat more experience than the average bear. One of the interesting things about Kaysville is you ask them what a crime is, my neighbors, you ask them what a crime is and they don't know, which is really cool. We live in a really, really nice community, which is why I think we are an absolute perfect location to help those who need help. We have, we don't have the infrastructure of crime. 16 people in a bus is not going to bring meth to our schools. Young people in Davis County, excuse me, specifically in Kaysville, they don't know how to deal drugs. They don't know what drugs are. I know that we're very concerned about our young people. I know, I know. I come from Ogden. I know. It's not as bad as in other places. Okay, allow me to correct that. It's not as bad as in other places. My argument is, is that 16 people on a bus is not going to turn us into West Ogden or Rose Park. I've seen the Lantern House in Ogden. I know that people are afraid of, that is what it's going to look like. And a bus is not going to do that. As the mayor mentioned, all over the country, people are doing the buses successfully. And I think that instead of mobilizing to change the law, I think that we should mobilize as an educated, affluent community who's concerned and involved to ask the state and the county for more help. I think there are more nonprofits that we can get involved. I think there are more national organizations that can get involved to help us. And, I mean, as a mother, I know, I know. I don't want homeless people, I mean, I don't want to look like South Salt Lake. I don't. But I think we have a community full of concerned citizens. We have a community full of excellent criminal justice specialists. We have wonderful working folk who are concerned, who are educated, who are capable to help and make sure that we do this successfully and carefully.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Jason Largie. I too have been here, I think, for all of the conversations that you all have had publicly and I thank you for being transparent. I do want to set a little bit of record straight on things that were said last night by Ms. Kamelou. She said that when she was asked if she'd talked to other places about this, when Fruit Heights residents asked her, she said, oh yeah, and I've been to Kaysville and they packed the house to hear me. She came and lectured us for a half hour and then ran away before she heard any of what we had to say back. She, I believe she's lied repeatedly. She came here and told us that the Emissions Center was not on the list, that it hadn't been considered for a location. She was upset that it was being discussed publicly. She, she was disappointed in Mayor Tran for broaching the subject and causing a ruckus. She was very condescending and demeaning. Last night, she told Fruit Heights, we've all been to places where they haven't tried anything and they're just really bad. And I wish someone in Fruit Heights had said, you're in a place like that and it's great. We didn't do that. I was a little bit confused by the last comments that said, yes, I think Kaysville is a great place to do it, but let's do the bus. I agree that let's do it in a way that doesn't aggregate and concentrate the issue where it already is not. I think all that the idea of having a warming shelter here was going to do is bring the problem to a place that doesn't have it. A big question, back to the county. This is, if it's a county problem, I'm confused that they say they don't want to be involved in managing the problem, but they're willing to spend all kinds of money and resources and volunteers to help a location instead of a bus. I think they're lying. I think that they don't want it. They blamed the state last night for rejecting the buses when it was really rejected because they wouldn't support it. But what is the cost of not doing the buses? They talked about the cost, loss of property, crime, drugs, business loss. Those are all losses and costs that it's going to cost Kaysville. Other note, what can we figure out to do about the trains? And who do we need to lean on to fix our problem on the train crossings so that we don't have the train blowing up?
Either one of you.
As someone who lives just a few houses down from the
The, I live on Old Mail from the Emissions Center.
Can I get your name? I'm sorry.
Jennifer English. I am just concerned about in the morning, when people don't want to get back on the bus and start wandering the neighborhoods or coming, you know, in our streets when the kids are standing on the corner there for the bus, for their school buses and dealing with the homeless people is a large concern of mine and what we could do to prevent, you know, the homeless people from wandering in the morning when they don't want to get back on the bus. That's it, thank you.
Mark Quillen. Got that, okay. So first off, call John Crofts, he just got elected to county commissioner. You have one outgoing that's Commissioner Elliott, his term is up in January. Call Stuart Barlow, call Stuart Adams, the president of the Utah Senate. I've talked to them. Jennifer Garner should have won over Stuart Barlow. My understanding is that the penalties for this were removed this year. I don't know in the legislature, this is what my understanding is. So why are we doing this if there's no penalty, first off, for doing that? Second off, to the last point, I also understand people cannot be forced to get back on the bus. So once someone comes to a community and sees that it's a nice community, they're not going to want to leave. Gailey Park is about a three and four minute walk away, one block from my house. Barnes Park, people will be hanging out there. Legacy Trail, they'll be on Legacy Trail all day. I run there three days a week, in the mornings, when it's dark. There's a lot of people out there, there are bushes, there's trees where people will be. And no matter how much compassion we have for people, there's not one thing that elevated police patrols can do to prevent the drugs from coming, to prevent the crime. You can't stop it. It will follow. It is inevitable and it is a fact. The drugs will come and there are a lot of drugs in Kaysville, in the high school, a lot of them. And they know how to get them and they know where to go and that will be another convenient place to get it. We can't stop it. The drugs will be here, the gangs will be here. We've got gangs coming across the border and infiltrating our cities. It will just be one more point of making money. And what I'm really concerned about is I understand this is temporary. What is the permanent solution? Right? That's something that we should be talking about now and we need to make sure it's not in a residential community at all. We can have compassion and care about people without hurting the people that already exist in a community. I would hope and I appreciate all the work that you've put in, but I would hope that as our elected representatives in this city, that you will continue to fight and put pressure on the county and on the state on our behalf as we've elected you to do. I moved to Kaysville because it's safe. I bought a home here under those with that understanding and I wanted to stay that way. That's all I'll say.
Jill Dredge. After attending the Fruit Heights meeting last night, everyone simply has more questions and more concerns. This is beyond strange that three sites have now been chosen that really make no sense. And this is coming back to the first site that made no sense last October. A homeless shelter, code blue or permanent, must be where homeless are and the facilities to help them. There's simply something strangely wrong about areas by schools, parks, businesses, and senior centers being considered. It is a citizen's right to ask questions for these choices. The bill that was passed in 2023 is recognized by almost everybody as a bad bill. In 2024, it's my understanding from a legislator that they removed the penalties. Does Davis County even need to do this? Or are we looking at this for money that the state is throwing at homelessness? All while we are a quiet sanctuary state, taking homeless and illegal immigrants from New York, illegal immigrants from Denver, and homeless from Wyoming. If Salt Lake wants to take that on, other counties should not have to participate. Kaysville is the city with the most single home dwelling. The question that is being asked is, why? Is Kaysville being looked at again to force mass transit down the road, which would bring a whole lot of changes to Kaysville, being discussed? Can cities nullify? That came up today. Are funds for roads accepted being withheld unless there is compliance, as they are doing to force cities to build high density? The people know that temporary code blue can, maybe will, turn into a permanent shelter. Switch point has been discussed in St. George, but a question is, if it's working so well, why are they building another one? A map was shared last night and identified Leighton and Clearfield as the cities with the most homeless. Leighton also has medical facilities. Why would you bus the majority of homeless out of these areas where the homeless are consolidated and take them somewhere else? Last question, do cities and counties have their own sovereignty anymore? We really appreciate the help that you guys are giving and we feel like the community coming together with you, we need to address this situation. Thanks.
Hello, Zane Morrison? So to just the young lady back here, there's a reason you live in a really nice neighborhood and it's because there's not homeless at it and the people obey the laws. That's why your neighborhood's so nice. We kept Kaysville nice. And Councilman Jackson, I think it's very magnanimous of you to offer $10,000 for, you know, just of Kaysville city taxpayers' money. At the very minimum, it should be population-based. You know, like if every city's $10,000, Sunset's a pretty small city. You know, that's a much bigger burden on them. But anyways, you want to, you want to spend $150,000 for something that's used 28 days, according to one person? I don't know what the figures are. You'll spend it, it'll be used for 28 days, $150,000 in a very small area. Yeah, it's going to be crime, they'll destroy the bus. They, those type of people tend to vandalize and destroy, it's obvious. If it gets put at the Emissions Center, it's right by the parking ride, cars are getting broken into. It'll be vandalized, guarantee you. Not a popular opinion, but in America, when there's government overreach, you know what we do? We do not comply. Do not go along with it. Do not comply, stand up. Get the county sheriff involved. We have a sovereignty of our own. Thank you.
Thank you for your participation, everyone. Is there anyone else that would like to speak about this topic?
Hi, my name is Laurie Crayton and I went on a field trip today. I first went to Valley View Golf Course. I'm not a golfer, my husband doesn't golf, so I went to check it out. It's a nice location, it's got lots of open acreage, except on the south side of it, there's about 10 to 12 really nice homes. If I lived in those homes, that would not be a location that I would want. So then we took a trip to the senior center over in Clearfield. I've been there before, I've been to the health department. As we drove in, I couldn't believe that Kaysville is the first choice. According to the county website, it says, the county has suggested that the primary warming center be located in the county emissions center building in Kaysville with backup facilities in Clearfield and Leighton. As I look at that facility, the senior center, and I, I'm a senior myself, so I'm not really thrilled about putting a homeless center in a senior building. It is located in the same parking lot as Davis County Health that has services, that has the ability to help those people. people. Somebody asked me today on Facebook, "Well, what is the health department going to do from 7:00 PM to 8 o'clock in the morning?" Well, that's kind of, you know, redundant. We know they're closed. But at 8 o'clock, they're open, and they're right there. Across the street from the health department and the senior center is a fire station and a police station, should they be needed for any events that happen at the center while those homeless folks are there. They're right there. I don't know how our aluminum-building, fume-infested emissions center with a concrete floor takes precedence over that building. This is my neighborhood. I am right down the street, and I am very concerned. I have a brother who is homeless, addicted to drugs, and he died. I know how strong they get when they're on those chemicals. I don't want this down the street from me with my kids
Scott Edwards. So I have a friend that lives really close to Davis High where they just allowed, you know, they're changing to allow youth who are in high school and don't have a place to stay. The first week they allowed that and introduced them to that area, he lost two wheels off his truck. The rest of the wheels were taken off, you know, the lug nuts were taken off. This, and they didn't get the other side because he has cameras there and he came out. This is exactly what will and does happen to every community that allows any little thing in, just like in St. George. My mom lives there. They're building another facility there because all the money from the federal government goes into that. Now, I hope we have something to do with keeping this out of our community, but none of us had a voice to be able to keep this out. There is one person. There is one person. That Lorraine Kamalu was our voice. She is our voice. She was on the committee. She's the one that supported, promoted, and pushed this. She's all in for these facilities. The only chance we have is to get people like her and her out of office, not making decisions for us. I know you did all you could. We did all we could. We just didn't have the power. The person that was put there did, and she is going to, if she has her way, have it all here. Another one, one on top of that. It won't stop with just this one thing. This financially devastates many people in this area. You will lose. When you're getting ripped off, when you have these problems, just thank Lorraine.
Hi, I don't know any of you. Never met you before. My name is TJ DeHaan. I've lived in Kaysville for 13, 14 years now. I just want to tell you all, I'm a plumber. I spend a lot of time around the homeless. I was building a lot of high-rise apartments and condos in downtown Salt Lake City. And I think that a lot of you, if you haven't spent some time in downtown Salt Lake City, you should probably go spend some actual time with some real homeless people. We are trying, well, we at my company, we try to employ, you know, employ people that are less fortunate than us, and we've had quite a few issues with them. But the ones that we are helping, they actually want the help. These people, they have to actually want help. During the pandemic, I would walk past dozens of these people daily, and in my personal experience, if we allow a shelter anywhere in Kaysville, I mean, anywhere you put a shelter, whether it's on wheels, which I think in my personal opinion is like an episode of South Park, or, you know, or whether you put it on the ground somewhere, you are going to have serious issues, okay? Daily, I would see things that you guys, you don't even want me to talk about on the city council, I promise you that. But if you put a homeless shelter anywhere here, you're going to have drugs, assaults, rapes, and most likely murders, and that's just the absolute facts. If you don't think that that's actually possible, I invite you to go downtown and spend some actual time. I'll take you down to one of our buildings down there. We have to clear it out with firearms some days. People drink hand sanitizer out of the toilets. We can't have toilets downtown Salt Lake City because people are drinking hand sanitizer. So I would ask you all, literally, go spend some actual time with some homeless people. See what's going to happen to your city. You will see your future if you go spend some time in Rio downtown. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a nice night.
Hello. So my name is-- I lived in Kaysville for 20 years. So for work, I worked for a property management company, managed buildings downtown, and what this guy just said is exactly right. There's-- in my office, I have a collection of needles, knives, all the stuff that we find in the parking, stuff that we can just throw in the dumpsters. So I don't understand why we're going to bring that problem to our city. So my thing is, I invite everybody to go after the county, call them, get, you know, do something, and the city be ready to litigate because you can no allow that to happen in our city. Thank you.
Oh, okay. One more? Thank you.
Amy, hi. Mayor Tran, city council. Scott Johnson. I've been a longtime resident of Kaysville. 20, I love the comments about compassion. I love the comments about being willing to pull together resources and find a solution. 20 nights, sounds harmless. 20 nights on a bus, bus in, bus out, sounds harmless. It's not just 20 nights. The state right now is in talks to bring about code red legislation, and it's going to have to be a solution that not only meets the needs in the nighttime during the winter, it's going to have to be a solution that meets the needs during the hot days in the summer. So it's not just a nighttime, nobody's going to see this thing. So whatever plans are in the works, that's something that has to be considered. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate your participation in our meeting, and we will move on to agenda item number-- Well, first of all, declaration of conflicts of interest. Does anyone have any? No? Okay, moving forward. Right. Thank you. We'll give you a minute. Okay, let's move on with the rest of our meeting. So we're on consent-- Okay, we'll move on to item number five, which is the consent agenda. Would someone like to make a motion to move that?
I'll make a motion to approve consent items A through C.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Adams.
Oh, he's gone. I was going to ask Chief how much he was selling the fire truck.
25K.
That's fine.
Oh, Councilmember Adams, your vote.
Oh, aye.
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 Okay, thank you. All right. Now we're on action items. Item number six, a resolution amending the consolidated fee schedule of Kaysville, amending the consolidated fee schedule of Kaysville City. I'll turn this over to Jason to present.
Thank you, mayor. This is pretty simple. We've looked at some of our fees and found that there just needs to be some cleanup and some updates. Most of this has to do with the grandma records request that we get from the police, through the police department, and the time that it takes especially to review the video evidence. And we've looked at other city fees and realigned our fees to reflect more of the going rate for those records requests. And so there's some other small cleanup here as well. For example, you no longer have a bicycle registration program, so that fee is being eliminated. We're also eliminating the fingerprint service fee. We'll provide that free of charge to residents when asked, so happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. And this was on our prior work item agenda, so for anyone watching, we have already discussed it mostly. Anyone, council? Any questions or comments? No? Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we pass a resolution of ending the consolidated fee schedule of Kaysville City.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, Councilmember Hunt.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Item 6B, rezone of .46 acres of property at 109 South, 102 West, from R120 Single Family Residential to R114 Single Family Residential for David and Valerie Becker. Turn the time to Ann.
Thank you, mayor. This proposed rezone is an effort to correct a longstanding property line discrepancy between the Becker property and the Kinney property. During the sale of the Kinney property, it was discovered that the Kinneys had constructed a driveway onto the Becker property. So this is an effort to facilitate a lot line adjustment to resolve that issue. The Becker property needs to be under 20,000 square feet in order to accomplish this, so a lot line adjustment can be recorded once this rezone is passed. The rezone application was presented at the planning commission meeting on October 24th. A public hearing was held, but no comments were made. We did receive one online comment submission that expressed support of this rezone, but the planning commission did pass it by unanimous vote. With that being said, the staff recommendation is to, recommendation of approval with support from the 2022 general plan to rezone this property at 109 South, 102 West, from R120 Single Family Residential to R114 Single Family Residential.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Do we have the Beckers here? Okay, is there anything that you'd like to share about this application? Come on to, come to the front, please, speak to the mic. Thank you.
No, a mistake was made a long time ago, and we're just trying to support, be good neighbors so that they can, we can all sell houses when we want to. But anyway.
Thank you, council. Do we have any questions? No? Okay, thank you.
No questions, but a comment.
Oh, comment. Councilmember Hunt.
Well, I mean, I watched the proceedings with the planning commission, and I just have really appreciated the care that the applicants have taken on this. I mean, it's kind of a, I assume on most properties would be a sensitive subject, and they've just been so great. I know the staff has had a good time working with them, and they've, and so, I mean, just thanks so much for getting it fixed and working it out and being so willing to accommodate.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the rezone of .46 acres of property, 109 South, 1025 West, from R120 Single Family Residential to R114 Single Family Residential for David and Valerie Becker.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Thank you. Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you so much, Beckers. All right, rezone of .53 acres of property at 18, no, excuse me, my eyes are bad, 1397 West Willowbrook Lane from R120 Single Family to R114 for Symphony Homes. Ann.
Thank you, mayor. So this rezone is a solution-oriented response to the city's requirement for a stub road to be created directly adjacent to the existing Encore Estate subdivision, which is currently in the preliminary plat subdivision process. The application for city council's approval tonight is strictly for the rezone of this property, and it is related directly to the administrative approval process for the Encore Estate subdivision. If the property were to be rezoned, the lot size would be able to reduce, be reduced, which would allow for the road stub in the ideal location as determined by city staff. You'll see on the PowerPoint that the existing 25-foot sewer easement on the west side of 1397 West Willowbrook Lane can be removed, and the existing sewer line can then be located within the right of way for the stub road. Additionally, the road stub could be pushed further east, allowing for better placement and less conflict with the planned cul-de-sac. And additionally, Symphony Homes would be able to yield the same amount of lots and still construct the road stub. Just for council's understanding, I wanted to provide a diagram of the preliminary plat that was provided to us by Symphony Homes for Encore Estates. This shows what was initially submitted for staff review, and if this road stub was to be approved, it would be cutting through Lot 5 as indicated on the plat. If the rezone were not to be approved, then the existing stub on Willowbrook would be, the distance between the stub would be well over 2,000 feet, which would be less than ideal based on staff review. With that in mind, we did receive one email in support of a rezone at the public hearing on October 2024. Planning Commission heard two comments from residents. One was opposed to the rezone due to the road connection, and one resident asked about the justification for the stub road. Again, I want to reiterate that the issue at hand is the rezone of the property to support the administrative process for the Encore Estate subdivision, and we did receive a unanimous vote from Planning Commission in support of this. With that being said, staff recommendation is approval of the rezone from R120 Single Family to R114 Single Family to enable that stub road to be constructed and for the Encore Estate subdivision to proceed through the subdivision process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ann. And we do have a representative here. Would you like to come and share anything?
Evening of collaboration tonight, and so all I'll say is I appreciate staff being willing to be creative in order for us to essentially have a better outcome than every other alternative. So, thank you. If there's any specific questions, I'm more than happy to speak to those as well.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
I'll just, I'll comment. I'll just echo that I'm really grateful for staff being able to figure out an alternative because I know that the lot in question is maybe owned by some, you know, some different entities, and they didn't want to lose the lot. I love this solution, and I think it's just fabulous. So, great job, seriously. I'll make a motion too, if nobody's going to say anything.
Pause one second. Councilmember Jackson?
Yeah, just my first concern looking at any of these is if we reduce a lot size, will the new home fit with the existing culture? Will it have the same setbacks and everything? And everything with this, I'm impressed, it looks good. I'm proud of the city, and Symphony Homes are coming together and working on this. And also the connectivity issue, I think that fits with our long-term plan for the city to make sure we have good connective routes throughout the city, and so I support this as well.
Okay, thank you so much. Anyone else?
I just think we should get some credit for moderate income housing for reducing the lot size.
Well noted. I agree. I agree.
Except the house is going to be like a million dollars.
Still a reduction.
Okay, we get our stars where we can. Okay, Councilmember Adams.
I'll make a motion that we approve action item C.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember--
Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion carries. All right, work items. We have an opportunity now to hear from Nathan Rich with Wasatch Integrated Waste Management District. Come on down.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. We're here to talk about recycling. I guess just briefly, I was here just over a year ago. I was relieved tonight. I thought everyone was here to show up in support of recycling, but unfortunately, it was not the case.
I know.
I was fine to wait my turn. So if you recall, when we were here a little over a year ago, we've been focusing on how do we diversify what we do with our waste stream. We're encouraging our cities to improve their recycling programs. I'm going to take a step back and say, Kaysville has a great recycling program, and we appreciate that. At that time, we were proposing, well, we actually passed at the board an ordinance that-- that would require all cities to implement a bundled recycling program where their fees would increase. We got a lot of pushback on that, and went through a process, ended up amending that ordinance in our May board meeting, and I think we really ended up with a better program, rather than a requirement for cities to have a recycling program, and I wish that all cities were as thoughtful about their solid waste as Caysville is. What we've done is we've crafted, we call it a diversion incentive, and cities that have recycling programs that meet certain criteria. So we want good quality recycling programs. We'll actually get a reduction in the household use fee that you pay that's directly calculated by the amount of waste that you divert out of your garbage can. So your green waste program i- is currently qualified for that because it was established through the district. I, yeah, I think Caysville currently diverts, I think, over, was it like 15% through the green waste?
15%.
Yeah, about 15% through the green waste program. You have a, a great co-megal program, but because, because it's still optional, we, we changed the program, we, we want cities to have, well, and I apologize, the definitions are a little complicated, but a true opt-out program is only opt-out during the period when the program rolls out, and then at some point, new moves, new move-ins to the community will be required to get a recycling can. So if, if, if Caysville decides to adopt that change to your recycling program, then you'll also qualify for the diversion incentive as it applies to the blue can, which is currently about 8%, 8 or 10% roughly. And, and then we, we, we plan on supporting the city with additional recycling educational materials. If you're not following, and I apologize, this is Collette West, she's our sustainability specialist, and she wasn't with us when I was here a year ago, so she's working on rolling out some of our recycling information. Take a look at our website, take a look at our Instagram, and I know we've talked with your social media people about trying to help get some of that information out there, and, and now I'm probably just talking too long. Are there any questions that you have for me?
Councilmember Blackham.
I have a question, because, I mean, I, I'm one of those people that believe you should be able to choose what you want, and I'm, I'm glad that a lot of people choose to recycle and that, and I think that's an option that they have chose to make, and, and because of that, that, that's good. But there's also people who have the choice to not want to participate in that. I don't, I don't think the city should dictate to somebody what kind of service of garbage they should have to have at their, on their street, so I, I like the opt-out, but I like the opt-out for everybody all the time, anytime they want. I don't like it that it's only for citizens who are there now, but when you move into the city in a year from now, you don't have a choice. I think you should always be able to have a choice.
I appreciate that.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yeah, I guess that leads to a question, thanks, Councilmember Blackham. If, like a new build, if they automatically are enrolled into that system, let's say, I don't know, 10 years from now?
Yeah.
Would they be able to opt-out? Like if they end up, if that resident ends up being on a fixed income, and they're retired, and money's tight?
Yeah.
How would that look?
Well, the answer's no, but, but we do, there is an opportunity for the city to implement a hardship policy, and the city has full latitude to, to, to describe that program any way that they would like to. We know Morgan City and County are currently preparing to roll out a bundled program, and in a lot of ways, that makes sense to me, and originally, that's what we were talking about, because if, if your, if your garbage isn't going into recycling, then it's going into the garbage can, and, and we're still managing that material. So there's a system advantage to, to diversifying our solid waste system. So the, the answer is, if the city would, wanted to consider a hardship program and allow people to, what we would say is, please provide them the opportunity to recycle. So give them a blue can, that incremental, incremental can is not going to cost the city much, but, but feel free to charge them less if there's a hardship situation that you think you should apply to that.
Well, I appreciate you answering that, and I actually really like that policy, because I, I tend to agree with Councilmember Blackham. I worry that if you force folks to do that, then they're not going to recycle responsibly.
Sure.
And I love the idea of doing a campaign and trying to get as many residents as possible to recycle, so, but thank you.
Okay. Yes.
So I'm just curious, I understand, you know, the concept of why we're trying to divert solid waste to recycling, but with this program in place, how much would you anticipate helping kind of our facility situation? Like, does it add a lot of time to?
Yeah.
The, the length of our facility, or the life, I guess?
Yeah, I, I think that's a, I, I guess a, a question that makes a lot of sense to ask, right? So if we're, we're diverting waste out of the waste stream, we're diverting it from the landfill, and, and the answer is, through a, we think through a well-developed curbside recycling program, we can, we can divert 15 to 20% of the waste stream into the blue can. With the green can, we think with those two combined, we can approach about 30% of the waste that's being generated, residential waste, from the solid waste disposal side. We currently have, we're currently already diverting about a third of the waste that's generated within the district, we're hauling it to a regional landfill 100 miles from here. And the reason we're doing that is because the Davis landfill has limited life to it, so, so we want to extend the life of that landfill because it gives us a lot of operational flexibility. On the days when the trucks can't run, we have a place to put the material, we, we can, we can divert, it, it's easy for us to run the same number of trucks and truck drivers every day, but we have twice as much waste in the summer as in the winter. So, so the answer is, we're not going to recycle our way out of closing that landfill. If we, if we divert 30% of our waste, we extend the life of the landfill by about 30%, but that landfill right now, with the waste we're already diverting, has about 17 years left in it. So if all of the communities, and that, and that's why it's important that, that, that everyone participates, because if you have, you know, 30% of a community, which is what you'll get on an opt-in basis, diverting 15% of their waste, you, you don't get very far, but if you have 100% of the community diverting, then, then you actually start moving the needle. What's important is, it's not just this landfill, it's the, it's the next landfill, and it's the avoided cost to not transfer that waste 100 miles into that landfill, and it's also something we should be thinking about in terms of the resources that, that we throw in the garbage can. There are a lot of renewable and non-renewable resources that go in the garbage can, that have huge energy savings if we recycle them, there's, there's environmental benefits, there's economic benefits to the recycling program, and it diversifies our program, so we're less subject to upset, you know, in, in any particular section of that. So a big part of it is our composting program, and then the recycling program, and then we always want to have that, a, a system has to be underpinned by a, a good quality landfill. Right now, that's the Davis landfill, we're currently using a waste management landfill, and we believe we're going to start using actually a landfill that we have part ownership in Utah County, we'll be hauling that waste just a little bit further to support the, the system that we own. So we'll be transferring next year, waste about 120 miles one way, and, and in 15-ish years with growth coming in, we'll be transferring 100% of our waste that distance, so, so it's about not just this landfill, but, but what we're doing moving forward. The other hope is that, you know, as we get people thinking about the blue can, because one thing that does, if, if you have to stand there and make decisions about what can it should go in, or answer to your wife, why you put what you did in the can, you put it, also makes you start thinking about what you purchased, and, and why you're buying, what you're buying, and what can I do to buy things that generate less waste? So, so it kind of changes a mindset when people are presented the opportunity to have that recycling can.
Okay, can I just ask one more question?
Yeah.
So with the holidays coming up, every Christmas, I think, can you put wrapping paper in the recycling? Is that recyclable? Sorry, it's kind of random.
Generally speaking, no. So, so the, the markets right now like craft paper, so cardboard and brown paper, and then office paper, white paper recycles pretty well, but that shiny stuff they put on there makes recycling of, of wrapping paper pretty difficult, so. So, so buy a couple bolts of, of material and, and get, use your reusable wrapping paper, or some people wrap in brown paper, so, you know, get some of that butcher paper and wrap it with that, and that is absolutely recyclable, the brown paper, so. Yeah, or, or yes, give the gift of love.
Can I add to that? I would love it if our city, like, put out blasts, like, before Christmas, to remind people about that, like, not to put that in recycling, because I think that would put it on the forefront of everyone's minds, and would be.
We'd love to help you with that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
But, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm curious about this, my uncle started a, I think I've told you, Paul Richards started a.
Yeah.
A company where they were essentially being paid to take garbage, and then they took the garbage and, you know, filtered it and got, recycled it, and made more money off of recycling, and it's made me wonder, the money that comes in from the recycled material, what does that ledger look like as far as, like, is it?
Yeah, I wish it was more than it was.
Okay, but.
So, so the business you're talking about, metro.
Metro waste, yeah.
It's interesting, they really focused on construction and demolition waste, and a lot of material that has a lot of steel in it, essentially, and there were some issues with.
Copper and whatnot, yeah.
With steel going out the back door.
Yeah.
At one point. So the answer is, we do, we do make rem revenue, so we call them the big five, but there's really six. Cardboard, aluminum cans, steel cans, plastics number one, plastics number two, and then mixed paper. All of those materials, we can, we can recover and segregate and, and sell. The markets are wild, they're wildly up and down. Aluminum and steel are pretty consistent, but cardboard and paper go up and down, they offset a portion of our operating costs because it's very expensive. The equipment to, and the personnel to operate the material recovery facility are pretty expensive, so, so it does cost money to recycle, and particularly to sort through, you know, all that mixed material that, that folks bring us. So we, we like what, days when cardboard's been up recently in the last few months, and that helps us a lot, about 60% of what people put in their bins is cardboard, which is highly recyclable, and, and we all, you know, get those boxes from Amazon, and they want them back, so we, we send it back to China, and they fill them up with stuff for us and send it back over.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you, Nathan, any other questions? Okay, so council, I will, thank you, Nathan.
Okay.
I'll just remind you that, yeah, good job. I'll just remind you that a couple months ago, I don't remember how long ago, we had the discussion about a mandatory recycling program, and the feedback from you was, hey, we don't know that, we don't really feel like everyone should be required, so did bring that back to the board. The Wasatch Integrated Waste Management Board is comprised of mayors and representatives from all 15 cities, as well as the county commission, who else is on there? I don't know, a couple other people, probably.
Each of the 15 cities, so not bountiful, but S. Morgan, three county commissioners, and Morgan's county commissioner, so 19.
19 people, okay. So we went and had a discussion, and really, the board allowed us to sort of lead the discussion and say, hey, can we soften this program? Can we make it more palatable? Caysville's currently at a 70% recycle rate, 70-plus percent, of, of an opt-in, just, not an opt-in, just a, we want to recycle as a community. And so initially, it was for everyone, every, every resident would be forced to have a recycle can. You guys said you don't want to do that, so we took that information back, and we said, okay, current residents are not going to have to do it. Now, the board just said, okay, let's have a compromise, let's have a program where we can have new residents do it, and then have a hardship program if necessary. So that was the compromise, and that's why it's, it's back, and that's why I hope that we can support it. It's a, it's, it's supported by the other cities, and it's sort of a collective effort to say, hey, let's, let's try to move the needle, and let's try to do our part, and we have noticed in our city, I don't have the stats for it, that a lot of people who are moving in are calling in, asking for cans. So, you know, at some point, I, I do think it's a good idea, I think it's a good idea to support this, and so, it's a work item right now. We would like it to become an action item, if someone would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we move Work Item A, a resolution adopting the proposed Wasatch Integrated Waste Management District recycling opt-out program to become a, an action item.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'll second.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion.
Familiar amendment?
Yes.
The, would you mind including that we, kind of the, the talk about actually having it, an option be available for those who are experiencing hardship? To, to your motion?
Sure.
That we include that?
Okay.
Okay.
Would you restate your motion, please?
Okay, so I will make a motion to move Work Item A, a resolution adopting the proposed Wasatch Integrated Waste Management District recycling opt-out program, and also include Councilmember Adams's suggestion that it also have in, within it, the, the hardship program, is that?
Perfect. No, I'll second.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Blackham.
Nate?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries, thank you, council, thank you, Nathan.
Bring your friend?
Yes.
Bring your shop, please, next Friday.
Come to the mic, thanks.
On November 15th, which happens to be America Recycles Day, we are actually celebrating the 40th anniversary of Wasatch Integrated Waste Management District. I invite you all to come up, or bring any of your staff who are interested, Taco Truck, and tours of the material recovery facility, so, from noon to 2:00, 3:00, we'll be there all afternoon, but, but tacos at noon, so if, if you're available, come up and see the facility, we'd love to show you what we're doing.
November 15th?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Uh, you go.
Okay, we'll circulate that flyer.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council member reports, does anyone have anything that they would like to share, discuss? Councilmembers, Councilmember Blackham?
The only thing I'd like to share is that it's cold enough now that mosquitoes are not going to bother you again the rest of this year. Now, how they survive the winter, I don't know, but they do, and they're, one of the managers from, I think it was Utah County or Weaver County, one of them, he gave a presentation on how they overwinter, and for as pesky as they are, they are about as tough as you could get, and.
Because we have a cold blue shelter for them now.
Anyway, so hopefully, we won't have any more mosquitoes for this year, but they are working diligently, and please, if you ever have any issues with them, or with mosquitoes or whatever, you have special events, please contact the mosquito abatement district, they're always willing to help you out, if they can, and they usually can, so.
They'll come to a, to our house and spray us.
Oh, absolutely, if you're having an event or something like that, that's particular, if you let them know, probably at least 48 hours in advance, they'll probably have a truck there the night before.
I didn't know that, thank you.
Yeah, no, they are, they are very user-friendly, and they do everything they can to help out people. I mean, if you have ornamental ponds, they'll bring fish, the little gambuja fish that eat the larvae and things like that, they'll want, they'll just, we'll put it on their list, they'll do it every year without asking you or whatever, and as long as you're on that list, they, they really do a, a good job, and they're very diligent at that pesky thing, you know, I have a shirt that says, let's all go out and kill mosquitoes, I think it's a great shirt, so, anyway, just thought I'd give that report.
Thank you, and thank you for serving on the mosquito abatement board for us. Anyone else?
The trunk-or-treat was a blast, in case anyone wanted to know, kids had fun, candy was taken, all went well.
And your car was fantastic, and thank you both for being there.
Absolutely. I just want to add.
Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
We just, and I don't know, Jason, you might mention this, but 200 North, we're getting closer to kicking off that big project of redoing it all, all up and down. Very excited about that, so.
Thank you, Jason.
That's right, yeah, should have a contract this month on Tudor North, so very exciting to kick that off, probably start. probably start construction in January. Have you ever been to Alaska? I think mosquitoes not only survive the cold, but I think they like it. They, they grow about 10 times as big.
It's the state bird.
Right. Just a reminder, Tuesday next week, 8:30 a.m. is the county workshop on the CRA funding, so if you're available, you're certainly welcome, even encouraged to attend just to show the support. We're hoping that this will be the final time we have to go to the, well, we'll have the work session, then hopefully a, a meeting to put that on as an action item to get that CRA funding approved by the county. Again, 8:30, we'll put out another reminder, I think there's a calendar invite that went out as well. And Mayor, did you want to talk about the 21st, I, as far as scheduling the next council meeting? I did check with the department heads, it doesn't look like we have any business that would really be necessary for the 21st, and we've got some scheduling, or.
Conflicts, yeah.
Conflicts, so, we look for more information on that, but I think we're looking at canceling the next meeting on the 21st.
Counsel, sound okay? Yes. Okay, thank you, Jason.
Do we need to do invites again?
I, I have it on mine.
Oh, weird. Somebody wants to.
Guess I won't be here.
You're in charge of the opening.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you, everyone, appreciate all of your work, and see you next time. Oh, oh, would some, someone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to adjourn.